Okay, and I would like to call the special city council meeting for the city of Evanston, Monday, April 1st, 2019, to order. Clerk Reed, would you call the roll?
Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Suffertin, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Brithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson. We have a call.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Reed. First item on our agenda is public comment. Clerk Reed, how many people do we have?
We have seven people signed up for -- we have eight people signed up for public comment. Can I -- do you want me to read the names?
They look too small for me to read from here, so I'll let you read the first three, and we'll have you step up and commence the --
Mike Vasolko, Eric Passett, and Ray Friedman.
Are you in the timer?
My name is Mike Vasolko. I just left handouts for you. There was a construction meeting at the Robert Crown Center on Friday. There was a discussion about the turf product and the turf infill material, which is EPDM. That submittal that was made to the contractor has been approved. It was approved by the architect and the contractor as directed by the city staff. They, however, are not liable for that material. The council members are liable because staff brought the information to you about the infill material, and they brought it to you in a way, though I think it was more of a cost discussion, about different costs for different infills. But they may not have brought to you any of the technical detail regarding EPDM, which is the specified infill product. Like crushed rubber, EPDM has some carcinogenic materials, chemicals in it, and other irritants. The manufacturer, again, is not liable because they published that material in what's called Material Safety and Data Sheets, which is attached to what I just gave you. And they give you other choices. They give you safer, non-toxic infill products to choose from. So you had choices, but again, staff may not have fully informed you. So the city needs to direct the contractor to hold purchasing the turf system even though it's been approved. The assistant city manager said on Friday that the issue may come back to council again in November, but again, I feel that's way too late because this is supposed to be installed next year. Council members need to stop the purchase of the turf EPDM system before the contractor releases it. Council needs to revisit the turf type, including considering a fully natural turf without any chemicals. Our children, our grandchildren should be able to play on the Robert Crown Center fields without any concern about developing a serious medical condition. Thank you very much.
Good evening. How are you?
As most people know, I've been to the council before. I'm Eric Passett, and I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos. And I don't know if this is the proper forum to address this, so I apologize for speaking about it, but I don't know where else you can address this. As most people know, we got our new assessed values of our properties two weeks ago, okay? Whatever we received as homeowners, buildings received as well, but about four times the increase. So we had buildings that were, say, valued at $2 million or $200,000 of assessed value are now worth $6 million. Well, in order for us to recoup whatever the -- I realize, like I said, I realize that you guys can't make this decision, but I'm hoping you can help us influence who can't. We're faced with -- I've been basically talking owners off of a bridge, if you want to, so to speak. We'd have to take buildings that we've shown people -- excuse me -- that we have rents that we're going to have to increase 5% to 10% to try and recoup this loss. You know, we're not -- you saw some of the buildings that we represent with Michelle Djerma. We'd have to chart, go from 900 a month to 1,000 on a studio. I guess I would urge people to -- urge the council to try and speak to the people involved in this, that, you know, you're going to -- not only are you going to see a lot of vacant buildings, if you'd start taking, let's say, commercial property. Commercial property is worse than apartment buildings, a lot worse than apartment buildings. Now you take a restaurant, barely making it. How many vacant properties do we have in downtown Evanston? Too many, right? Okay? Now you're going to take that restaurant who's barely making it, and we're going to have -- they're in a triple net lease. So now they're paying the property taxes that they can barely pay now. Now we're going to have to -- now we're going to have to tack on more money. How many more vacant properties are we going to have in downtown Evanston? A lot. You know, this is a fact that I cannot believe that this happened. Now, we don't know the equalizer or the -- however they figure out the exact amount of the taxes, but they're going to go up a lot. And whatever they're going to go up on property -- no, private owners like myself -- I live in Evanston, so my property taxes are probably going to go up 5%, 10%, something like that, okay? Property owners like myself and people who are in this business, they're going to go up, they could go up 40%, 50%, 60%, if the equalizer's not changed. That is a scary thought. And then state of Illinois is talking about doing rent control. You get the point?
Yeah.
So I just didn't know what other forum to bring this up to. I don't feel like we can, you know, do I go drive down the state of Illinois and bring this up? I don't think so. So anyways, it's enough.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, did you have something to?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. At the Commissioner Suffertin's meeting the other night, he and I spoke briefly about the problem. It's a real problem. And I would just would like staff to talk with Commissioner Suffertin about this and prepare a report for us because it does affect everybody.
Yeah, and for some businesses, I think
Downtown. I mean, it's
It could be catastrophic for a number of
Yes, absolutely.
Small businesses, yeah. All right, thanks for that.
Ray Friedman, Bennett Johnson, and Betty Esther.
First, I'd like to say before I comment on what this gentleman just said, I just was noticing the clock, which I thought was interesting. Last meeting started at 6:00. It's now after 7:30. So apparently, that last meeting went one hour over the time because this meeting starts at 6:30, and it's now past 7:30. So the timeframe is just, I guess, it's not working. That's what I'm trying to say. But thank you for your comment. And basically, I wanted to talk about money, which -- property taxes, correct. My property taxes, the assessed value doubled. And I think Cicely said the same thing, I believe, on her -- I mean, it's all over. I keep on asking how this money that is in this municipal bond is affecting our property taxes specifically. I've asked it time and time and time again. We still don't have an answer. That's not right. Okay, now we have assessed values of our property doubling, and now I'm not just talking about Robert Crown and $54 million. The municipal bond was for $85 million. I understand not all of the $85 million was taken yet. I'm assuming it will be. So if you take $85 million, figure out what the debt service is for 23 years, I don't know what the number is. But my guess is that it's a whole lot more than $3 million a year. My guess is it would be double. So as long as there's money in the bank to cover the projects, I'm okay with it. But when we have to start raising taxes and fees and, you know, it doesn't feel good. It's, I mean, you're, you know, causing people to leave. You're bankrupting people. It's not a good situation. We need to know, how is this money, these expenditures, affecting us? Everybody.
Alderman, members of the council, city manager, city clerk, I'm inviting you officially to the meeting of the Harley-Clark Committee on Thursday in the parasol room. We have three speakers that I think you guys should hear. One is the lady who has a Halliburton house in Rock Island. She's coming in from Rock Island, talk about what they did there. We have another lady from Crystal Lake, talking about the Dogmants and how they did it and so forth. And then we have the third person representing Theatrous Gates. Mr. Gates did the Stony Island Arts Building in Chicago on the south side. And each one will go through how they raised money, what the community did, what the city did, and so forth. I think it'd be very instructive. So if you could, I think it'd be a good idea for as many of you as possible to make that meeting. A side comment on the public comment discussion that you had earlier. I appreciate the need for efficiency, and I appreciate the fact that you guys spend a lot of time sitting up there, and it kind of wears on you. But I want you to realize that efficiency was what Mussolini promised. Mussolini promised that the trains would run on time, and they did. So I think we -- basically, I think we have the right idea to get the people involved because after all, that's whom you serve. So remember, efficiency is fine, but the people are first. Thank you very
Betty?
Miss Esther.
Miss Esther. And in my haste to get the meeting going, I forgot to mention, I'm serving as mayor pro temp because the mayor's flight was, I think, canceled, and he is unable to make it here in time. So that's why I'm sitting in his chair tonight.
Followed by Ms. Esther, we'll have Claire Kelly, Leslie McMillan, and Mary Rosensky.
Okay. On the sign up for the agenda, Doreen did sign up. She didn't see the sheet, and you didn't ask her when you was going around. So would it be possible for you to put her name on there?
Sure.
You skipped here by mistake.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. From the previous meeting, the rules committee, it was said that the public has a chance to speak at the different meetings on projects and things like the DAPR committee, the zoning and stuff. Those are projects and things that comes down and wind up at zoning. Then we have all of the other committees that are listed and stuff. But one thing, when we go to these meetings and we speak, and the people at the meetings make a decision, and we clap them and say, "Okay, yeah, you're making the right decision." And then they come and bring that decision to you, and you say, "No, we're going this way." Then I have to ask, what is the -- what was we over there? And we should spend more of our time talking to you since you are the one that have the last word. So if you're not going to take into account and the people on the committee, seriously, their debates and everything, then we come to you and try to convince you to do what we ask. And that's why we are here speaking in, well, three minutes or longer to speak, to convince you, because we have seen in the past that at the committee meetings and things where we talk and tell them about the issue and everything, and the committee might agree, but you don't agree with the committee, with their recommendation. So the place for us to make those points are with you because you are the decision making. And so we need our three minutes. Thank you.[902.82][902.82][applause]
Claire Kelly. So a lot of questions about the Robert Crown Center, and so I'm just going to touch on one question that I have not been able to get an answer from, from the city manager's office. And so we -- and I think a lot of the residents don't realize that we spent over $800,000 to hire a fundraiser, the city did, with taxpayer money, to hire a fundraiser from CCS Fundraising to raise money for the Robert Crown. So I've asked several times how much money -- I've asked Erica Storley and the city manager's office, how much money did Michael have of CCS Fundraising raise? To date, I still have not received an answer. Meanwhile, so did he raise any money? And if he did raise money, I've also asked, where is the money? So we don't know. Citizens don't know. I think citizens don't really quite -- aren't quite really aware that we spent that kind of money to fundraise. So I'm asking you again, did that -- did CCS Fundraising, on the taxpayer dollar of over $800,000, I'd like to know if money was raised, and if it was raised, how much was raised, and where is that money? Did we hand it off to a private organization with which we, to date, still have no official arrangement for them to put in a private bank account and disperse as they want to? Where is that money? It should be in a city account, but we have not received an answer. This is very important. As you know, as the gentleman spoke previously, this is going to cost us a lot in taxes. For every about $10 million that we're bonding out, it's going to cost us around another $900,000 a year. So this is going to hurt us in terms of our property taxes, and we have a right to answers. We have a right to ask these questions, and we should be able to get an answer as to where, what money was raised by CCS Fundraising, paid for by Evanston taxpayers, how much was raised, and where is that money? Thank you.[1033.01][1033.01][applause]
Hi, Mary Rosensky, and I want to follow up. I did agree with what Claire said, so I won't repeat that. But I think it comes down to, for a lot of us, we do want the complete transparency of our finances. And it's so unclear as to where things happen because back in memos from 2017, it says that we had the funds and CCS had raised 9.5 million. And today, or in the last couple months, we're only at a little over 10 million. And so there's a private donor somewhere, there's a matching grant donor. And I think this project is so huge that we need complete financial disclosure on all levels for the taxpayers before we sign any resolution. I do applaud whoever got Valley and Wintrust to donate. That was great. But the other -- I guess there's still six more things out there that need to be discussed before they're approved. So I'm asking for the transparency. And along the lines of what this gentleman said, we're going to have, if we bond out more than the $43 million, which we're going to have a $3 million a year debt service for that debt alone every year. And last year, we raised taxes, we cut services. I went through the list of what was sent to me from the city's -- from the city manager's office, and I'm very concerned. What are we going to do next year when we have 1.8 million? Where are we going to get that? Are we going to raise it again? I mean, I got hit with a $200 registration fee for a rental unit that I didn't know I was going to have to pay because it kind of slipped in there. So I think if you have property owners here, like he said, we're going to have a really hard time if you continue to raise the water, raise this, raise that, raise that, needing and keeping anything livable in this town. Thank you.[1160.33][1160.33][applause]
Mr. Coyne, then Doreen Press.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for your service, and city manager, and city clerk, and city council. My name is Dan Coyne, and I live in the Ninth Ward. I believe that the council will be eventually looking at some of the revisions of the Ethics Subcommittee and the Ethics Board. I want to share about my experience with the recent public comment at Ridgefield Park District. On March 14, during public comment, Alderman Rainey spoke for eight minutes during our Ridgefield Park District Board of Commissioners meeting. I have had the honor of serving on this board these past six years. One of the most -- one of the most concerning comments spoken by Alderman Rainey was, quote
Mr. Coyne, are you just going to read the same one you just read to us a little bit ago? Or?
I can't hear. I'm sorry, sir.
Is it the same statement you just read, like, an hour ago? Or? It sounds like it's the same word for word.
This is a different meeting, is it not?
It is. I mean, you're entitled to three minutes, but, okay.
Thank you.
All right. I just was a little confused. I thought maybe you were unintentionally reading the wrong one or something.
I'm sorry?
I thought maybe you were unintentionally reading the wrong comments, but, sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to.
Could I start over, sir?
Sure. You have your three minutes.
Yeah, I know what I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you. I want to share about my experience with the recent public comment at Ridgefield Park District. On March 14, during public comments, Alderman Rainey spoke for eight minutes during our Ridgefield Park District Board of Commissioners meeting. I've had the honor of serving on this board these past six years. One of the most concerning comments spoken by Alderman Rainey was, quote, "Any black person who wants a porta potty in their backyard is stupid," unquote. She went on to suggest that our board should raise taxes via referendum instead of using porta potties in our parks. Ms. Rainey also stated that Commissioner Rob Beatty, quote, "doesn't wear big boy pants in his role as our vice president of the board," and that he has sat on his big boy bottom for the last six years doing nothing. Well, I respectfully disagree. My African-American neighbors like to relieve themselves with dignity and privacy, just like everyone else in this world. Furthermore, my neighbors of color are not stupid. Mr. Beatty, the very first African-American elected to the RPD Board of Commissioners, has honorably served our community, and all of us are better because of it. City council, I hope you're not silent. This business of filing your peers unethical behaviors that include racial slurs and outright bullying must end. I'm a citizen, and I will not be silent, not for anyone, regardless of their perceived power, who treats our citizens with such disdain. Today's rule discusses -- in your rule committee, you've been discussing improvements, but you cannot remain silent on this problem. I ask our council, do you agree with Alderman Rainey that Evanston's black citizens are stupid? Do you believe her claim that Mr. Robert Beatty's leadership has been worthless? Is this behavior acceptable of city council members? I'm an elected government servant. I also, just like you, took a firm -- affirmed to follow our Constitution of the United States and the state of Illinois. I'm guessing that we all agree that our First Amendment rights of free speech are the bedrock of this great experiment in democracy, including Ms. Rainey's words. However, when an elected official uses racist, hateful, and libel words, she needs censorship. She needs accountability, in my opinion. Perhaps it's time that we, as a community, examine ourselves a little bit more closely and discover a more acceptable means to govern. Thank you.[1426.42][1426.42][applause]
And Ms. Price.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I did catch signing up. The one thing I found very unusual, and I thought, oh, well, this is supposed to be a meeting on purpose or goals. It just says special city council meeting. There's nothing in there that says what the topic's about when you go behind closed doors. There's nothing in here that tells me that I could say something that's immediately impactful for you, so I'm just going to do the best I can. But I think it would be better if we're all on the same page as to where our comments are going, and you'll be less surprised about people bringing up things that don't make sense to you. Context matters on both sides. The MSDS, I'm a scientist by training. MSDS is like kind of the gold standard. There's a lot more behind it. I also know about biology. I also know about toxicity studies. I also know about how they're done. I also know in terms of pharmaceuticals and other things, in terms of things that work versus not. I also know about hype, and I also know about the things that people are a little bit less knowledgeable on misuse information. And that is, in this particular case, true of most things that are commercialized that I've experienced and know about. That is the abuses in our society. The people who don't, that's fine. But when you have something that's going to affect the lives of kids, and you're talking about, we're finding, all these studies that say that your grandparents influence your genetics. So you're going to -- your great-grandkids are going to be possibly an experiment when we know that grass works and grass doesn't kill, and grass is a labor of love, and maybe you could have some kids in terms of pitching in. The second thing, Open Meetings Act. Please, please, please have someone independent of our -- of anyone from the city council on this so that it's going to be without question independent, because open meetings are right now what people are saying, that maybe we don't have enough discussion. And I think that that's a legitimate concern. And so having transparency and separation would be really, really good. And then one last thing, Dr. Fisk, thank you very much, saying that procedures can be done a different way and be more effective is gutsy, and it's also something that needs to be said, and I say thank you.[1571.82][1571.82][applause]
Okay, and that concludes our public comments.
So I make announcements of the clerk. It's not on the agenda, but I just have a quick
Election update?
Quick election update.
All right. We're all interested in the election. And people ought to really vote since taxes are a big issue tonight, and, you know, we're not responsible for the majority tax bill.
I apologize. So early voting concluded today. We had, with early voting, some of the lowest voter turnout on record, unfortunately. Although today, we did have over 229 Evanston voters cast a ballot today here at the Civic Center, although we've had a total over the last two weeks of just over 1,000 voters. So we're not excited about participation, and we will be coming back to the council at the next council meeting with a full election snapshot and what we have learned from this election as we traditionally have. So we encourage folks tomorrow to go out and vote. Polls are open from 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. You can find a list of local polling locations on the clerk's website, as well as a list of candidates and links to their campaign financial reports and other very pertinent information. So we hope folks are going to get out and vote tomorrow. You can also join the clerk's office and, you know, reach out to some last-minute voters to get them out tomorrow. So thank you. Bye.
Thank you. I will be making a motion to convene into executive session. Just double check. Corporation Council, we just have the C1 exception tonight. Okay, all right. So I move pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding employment. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5ILCS 120/2ACNC -- well, really, slash 2AC1. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And city clerk, would you call the roll?
Call of the wards.
It wasn't on the agenda. I mean, do you want to? Okay, quick call of the wards. Who do we start with the roll? Alderman Brithwaite? You'll be back here for executive session, okay, and to vote on that. Alderman Ruth Simmons, who's not here, so.
Would you call on me?
Alderman Rainey.
Yes. I'd like to respond to Coyne's diatribe, which is the second time this evening he's read the same abusive, blatant misinterpretation of my comments at the Ridgefield Park District Board meeting. I went to the board meeting in response to a crazy, crazy video that was on Facebook, which mentioned me several times. He and Bob Beatty did a video, and I was really addressing Dan Coyne's comments, not so much Bob Beatty, who really goes along for the ride with Dan Coyne. And what I said was very different from And what I said was very different from what he said. What I said was, why, why are you complaining so much? You've been the, you've been the majority on the board of Ridgeville Park District. You are arguing that the board has been racist in disallowing porta potties in backyards and the little parks that are in the Ridgeville Park Districts. Why don't you, why don't you have a referendum where you can raise taxes? I'm, I'm part of the Ridgeville Park District. I'd be willing to pay more. Your infrastructure is lacking. I believe Ridgeville Park District members deserve more in terms of their infrastructure. I don't believe any black person or any white person or any person of any creed, color of anything wants a porta potty in their backyard. Anybody who wants porta potty in their backyard is stupid. I stand by that comment. Who wants a porta potty in their backyard? Nobody wants a porta potty. My argument was that anybody who's been on the board of Ridgeville for six years and continues to argue, and who's been in the majority and continues to argue that nothing's been done, shows a total lack of leadership, which I hammered home and hasn't gotten anything done, shame on them. They need to put on their big boy pants and stop sitting on their big boy butts and do something. Get your leadership skills together and do something. Raise some money. The people in Ridgeville and the Ridgeville District deserve more. That's exactly what I said. I, I stand by every word, every single word. If you want more, if you want to do more, act, act. Don't complain that nobody's done anything in Ridgeville. Do it, do it, do it now. I stand by that completely. Why everything has to be twisted and made ugly? But at least he got to come on the night of the election. Maybe he got a vote or two, I don't know. But good luck to the good people who are running, bad luck to him.
Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Brithwaite.
No report.
Alderman Wen.
I'll have my regular office hours this Thursday morning, April 4th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Also Thursday evening at the Autobahn site at, there on Chicago Avenue, we're going to have a community meeting to discuss the redevelopment of the west side of Chicago Avenue, south of Greenleaf. Thank you. 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. I will reiterate that we were, we've got the subcommittee meeting, I think, subcommittee meeting on the 22nd, 4:15. And with that, I will renew my motion. Do I need to renew it or I already stated? Should I read it again? It's been a little while. All right, thank you. So I move pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding employment. These, this agenda item is permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. The exception is five ILCS 120/2AC1. If you could call the roll, city clerk.
Alderman Suffordin, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Brithwaite, Alderman Wen, and Alderman Wilson.
Aye. And with that, we will convene into executive session. Thank you.